I'm going to go ahead and get started with our city council legislative dinner with our city council and our state representatives. Senator, thank you for coming. So we're going to do just kind of work our way around the room. You can share, and so share your name, your title, and anything that you are working on or would like for us to know. And I think more from for you guys to kind of share. I know you're all in special session right now.
Almost, almost.
Almost.
Very first.
When does it start?
Thursday.
Thursday, okay. So.
Don't get them too excited, too.
Don't get them too excited, too bad. Okay, so I am mayor pro temp, Susie Valgofairin. I'm stepping in for the mayor. She's out of town. And we'll go that way and then we'll end with you all.
Yeah, Matthew Popkin, Longmont City Council, Ward Two.
Shakiti Dogbro, Longmont City Council at large.
Councilwoman Diane Christ, Ward One.
Harold Dominguez, City Manager.
Zach Ardis, I'm Assistant City Manager of the Public Safety.
Sandy Sider, Assistant City Manager for Shared Services and the Council's lobbyist.
Becky Doyle, Chief Strategic Giving Vision Officer.
Christina Pacheco, Human Services Director.
Dave Hornbacher, Assistant City Manager, Utilities, Public Works and Engineering.
Dan Wu, I am State Representative, Hustle Ship Nineteen, and I have a little bit of Longmont. I believe it goes west to Case. And then I have all fire sub Frederick Conoiri. And probably going to focus on public safety bills this year. Possibly cost of living, but I definitely have a strong focus on, you know, public safety and trying to decrease crime here, especially in Denver, but the entire state. So will be a major focus.
Nice. Do you have any special session bills?
Um, I.
Not to put you on the hot spot, sorry.
She put me on the hot spot. I believe I will be on a bill with another representative. I can't even fully yet right now. I apologize. I will be starting it tomorrow when I'm at the Capitol.
And I was gonna ask you.
I was just gonna ask you, do you want us to do a special session update?
Yes, please.
Okay, great. So we can tag team a little bit in terms of the updates there and what we can share about our work on that. I'm Katie Wallace. I'm the state senator for Longmont Erie and Lafayette. And we are, so I'll just start sort of from a high level of why we're heading into the special session. So H R one, the tax budget bill coming from the federal level really tore a hole in the state's budget. So on July first, we had a balanced budget that we worked out in the regular session. Come July fourth and the signing of H R one, that bill was blown apart. Part of the reason for that is how Colorado's tax code is tied to the federal level, which makes it so that both our federal, the way we calculate income through federal adjusted gross income tied to the federal level. And then our tax codes, so which where we are collecting taxes or not, where we're giving tax breaks are also heftily tied to the federal level. That means immediately the change in the revenue that the state is bringing in, it happens immediately, given the changes in revenue being collected at the federal level. We're one of only a handful of states, I think it's four, that collects taxes in that way and that tie our taxes to the federal level in that way. And right now we are experiencing serious harm as a result of that, right? And choices were made in H R one to take healthcare away from folks, to make it harder to access SNAP and to cut benefits there in exchange for a lot of corporate tax incentives. So it's a lot for us to be facing. We have several tax deductions and other things that Brett McCormick is leading on one of them, so I'll let her chime in on more of those. Two things I wanted to talk about in particular, so I'm leading the Healthy School Meals for All Ballot Initiative. I co-led that this last session. That original bill made it so that we sent forward two ballot initiatives to the November ballot. Proposition LL will remain the same. That proposition will make it so that we can retain the funds that we collected over the taper cap originally approved by the voters for that program. It will ensure universality in that program, which makes it so that schools avoid the incredible administrative burden of trying to figure out which kids qualify. We also take away the shame that comes with having to access those lunches. And we make up for a lot of what the federal school lunch program misses in terms of where it calculates income, right? So a lot of those middle income families who are struggling to afford food and other basic necessities every single day are covered by this program because it is simply universal. Everybody gets it. So we're not leaving any kiddos out. As a result of it, we've served 600,000 meals to date and we save families $1,300 per child per year, right? So it's immensely beneficial. Proposition LL to retain those funds is moving forward. The second initiative that we put forward in that bill is Proposition MM. That bill expands the program so that we can fully fund, no, we can keep it universal and we can fully fund things like local purchasing programs, which highly benefit our local agricultural producers as well as other businesses in the local areas. And it also provides technical grants for our schools. Part of that is what do you do when you get 50 pounds of cantaloupe and how do you have kids want to eat it, right? So that program as a full is again incredibly beneficial to our students. It keeps them healthier. It keeps them, which makes them do better in school, which means that they can generate more for our societies in the long term, right? So it's something we're glad Colorado voters approved. We believe because of other changes in H R one, the federal tax bill, that we will collect a little bit more from that program than we need. And so part of what we're doing in special session is changing the ballot language to say monies will first go to making sure this program remains universal and is fully funded. And then excess funds can come back to counties and the state to help administer SNAP, which has been decimated under H R one and is going to cause serious hunger problems in our community. So that's what I'm doing. Just the small work of keeping our children fed, both at home and at school. That's what I'll be focused on. The last thing I wanted to say before passing it over to Brett McCormick is about healthcare. So in H R one, we saw incredible cuts to Medicaid that are going to be also detrimental to our communities. Those will not come in until 2027, so we can address them in the regular session. What we cannot address in the regular, or way to address, is the changes to, the federal tax bill removed the premium tax credit that subsidizes health insurance on the exchange. That participation from those folks stabilizes our exchange and makes it so that folks are healthier and have access to insurance. As a result of that tax credit being removed, in Boulder County alone, premiums are going to go up 106% on average, starting in October. So we have a bill, Brett McCormick will speak further to it, to try to address that currently, right? And it's going to be long-term fixes because once again, we are being, our people are being left out in the cold as a result of H R one. I know I said I would wrap up. I do just want to say one last thing. I toured with Boulder County. I toured, and I know Harold, you oversee the housing developments here that support folks in Longmont with subsidized housing. So I toured Sanya, I toured all of your housing developments. They're wonderful and they're providing incredible things for folks in need in our community. I also looked a constituent in the face who told me that as a result of H R one, he would be kicked out of his supporter housing. And I think one of the most impactful things that he said to me was that this could be any one of us, right? He was a dean, an arts dean at a university in Denver prior to this. And then because of physical and mental health injuries, he ended up living in a van and then homeless. The only stability he got was through his housing voucher. He wrote a poem, I'm happy to share it with you all, about the safety that he feels as a result of this. That's what's being torn away in H R one. And that's what I'm hearing from constituents every day who are fearful. And we're going to see homelessness, increased crime, other things as a result of this. And so I just can't emphasize enough to you all how much we have to address in the special session and all the things that are about to come down the pike. And so I just wanted to share that as, because that's your constituent too. It's someone that you all are working incredibly hard to keep housed, to keep stable, and he deserves it and so do the rest of our constituents.
Thank you. Well, I'm Karen McCormick and I'm the state representative for District 11, which is most of Longmont, the part east of Case. And I just wanted.
West.
Sorry, west, east, west. I guess I've been standing on my head all day. That, one thing that Senator Wallace kind of alluded to is that all of these things are in the ecosystem of people and trying to support people in our state without having some kind of domino effect that affects all of the other systems. And that's what's important to remember. And what has happened on July fourth is the impact to our current budget. And that's why we have to go back right now. We have a constitutional requirement here in the state of Colorado to have a balanced budget. And as of July fourth, we do not have a balanced budget for this fiscal year. And that's the urgency of going back to fix this right now. With all of the places, and I even brought the governor's call here with me because I wanted you to understand all the different pieces that we have to address this week. Even with all the nooks and crannies that we had to look into last year for our $1.2 billion shortfall, there's very little change in the couch cushions left because we did that hard work last year. So we're in a much more difficult position this year. And luckily, over the past 14 years, the General Assembly has done a really good job of recognizing a need for a stronger reserve in our coffers. And it typically used to be around 4%. And we have made it a point to bring that up to 15% reserve. And that's important because even a 15% reserve will not get us through a severe recession. And they're already predicting a 50% likelihood of a recession in the coming year. So that's a problem. And that we may need to even get up to an 18% reserve to weather what might come in the next two years. And these are from two different forecasting centers that have come up with those numbers. So we are looking at, we were tasked with seven different things from the governor to look at the fiscal impact of H R one to our budget and how to address part of that. We will need to dip into our reserve because with all the things that we have been able to come up with, we're still going to be short. There was going to be a Tabor refund this coming next year. That's gone because of H R one as well. So that excess now helps us with that $1.2 billion hole because it's not in excess anymore. So basically, we have to look at different parts of statute regarding revenue shortfalls and the insufficient revenue. We're going to look at the ability for the state to sell future tax credits to insurance companies. And I think even some corporate entities that have a tax burden in the future that they could be able to prepay that tax burden now, because we need the money now, and receive a credit in the future, which kind of helps them, it helps us. So we're looking at a bill that will do that. We are going to look at a piece of legislation that will decouple some of the qualified business income deduction that we have, that we've already done in the past. And so we're going to look at extending that piece of legislation. I have a bill written down. We did one in 2022, I think. So that is going to be extended into the future. We're looking at adjustments and reductions to the home office and regional home office rate reduction. This was a piece of, an incentive that was supposed to incentivize large companies to keep 2.5% of their workforce here in our state. We have looked back over the years to realize that that actually isn't working as intended. And that reduction that they were able to take off the 2% fee that they pay down to 1%, because it's not working, we're looking at actually just not having that 50% deduction there. And then we're looking at expanding some of the foreign listed jurisdictions that are allowed to not pay state taxes when they have a large part of their business out of the country. So we're going to look at adding some of those countries back into where they need to be considering paying Colorado state taxes. And all of these have about like a $70 to $100 million, just getting near ballpark, impact to our revenue to help us. There will be, I'm carrying this bill, an adjustment to the sales tax vendor fee here in our state. We're one, there's quite a few states, 20-plus states in the nation that don't have this at all. And this is something that I was able to take advantage of as a small business owner over the years, where if you're a business owner and you're collecting sales and use tax or collecting sales tax and figuring out your use tax and then remitting that to the state, you are allowed to keep a small portion of that 2.9% Colorado state tax. It was 3.3% of the 2.9. Now it's 4% of the 2.9. And it was put into place in 1935, back when you had to figure this out with a pencil and you didn't even have a calculator. I had to do it with a calculator and a written form. We have really upgraded our systems. There are great accounting software and inventory management tools that businesses have. And I've spoken to several small businesses and medium-sized businesses that this really, at this point in time, does not take a lot of their time. One, over $2 million business I talked to said it takes their bookkeeper about 20 minutes a month. And the fact that the average vendor discount fee is about $80 per filing period, this is not a large amount of money per business that will make or break that business. But on, when you accumulate all that together, again, there's another $60 to $75 million that's missing from the state. And this won't affect local sales and use tax, you know, at the city or county level. The last one, I don't, oh, is this concerning decoupling? I don't really, I can't really explain this one. Through an add-back of the federal foreign-derived intangible income deduction. Don't ask me about that one. I'm not a tax expert. There, the governor's call had two issues to address through the healthcare space to make sure that access to services delivered by providers that are now banned through H R one that cannot receive federal Medicaid funding, that somehow we're going to be able to ensure availability of those Medicaid services to the eligible individuals. So that's something we're addressing. Also ways to help our health insurance affordability enterprise, our reinsurance program, to make sure that these increases in premium that were already predicted by our Department of Insurance. They were predicting, I think, a 28% increase across the board statewide. Why? This was before H R one. Up to 38% on the western slope. And without the subsidy that people that pay for insurance that are working, without that, many of those folks are going to just drop their health insurance. And that, again, has a trickle effect on our healthcare systems, our safety net systems, all of the above. So whatever we can do to try to prevent some of that health insurance coverage loss for individuals is what we're in the individual market and on Connect for Health Colorado. The food security issue, we're supposed to address with, which Senator Wallace went over with you. And then the last fun thing is artificial intelligence. It doesn't seem to fit in with any of the other things, because it doesn't. But that is also in the governor's call and we've had a lot of stakeholders meeting on that since Senate Bill 205, two years ago, to come up with a solution that will not only make some definitions more clear, but also help the the developers, make sure that the developers of AI systems have more of the liability than the than the deployers, the people that are using it. So there's two bills, at least that I know of. Representative Wu might have more information on other bills that are coming forward in that space. So there's, as you can imagine, over the last week, week and a half, we have been in the weeds on this very short runway to big problems that we're doing our very, very best to solve. And knowing which ones we have to solve now versus which ones can wait for regular session. So we'll stop there.
Then I think before we go on to our agenda, if there's anyone who has questions or follow-up comments?
I know it's a class, but I have a couple of questions.
I'm sure you do.
First, have you considered asking AI how to solve the state budget crisis? Just thinking using tools A I.
You know, I'm afraid I'd know what it would come up with.
On the more serious note, Katie, I want to ask a question about the propositions you mentioned. And this is my ignorance of the state process here. Is, are those, when, if those are passed, do those go on the ballot then for the whole state to vote on?
So they're already passed and on the ballot for the whole state to vote on, exactly.
Oh, those were passed in, in the regular.
They were passed in regular. One is being adapted in the special session. If that bill happened to fail, it would go on anyway as it is. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so they're, they're passed. It's going to be on the ballot for this fall?
November 23rd.
And as part of the deadline, we had to get any ballot change, language change done by September 5th.
Which is why we are meeting.
Which is why we're meeting now.
See, I love that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, you know, Sandy's my BFF during sessions, so. You know, as these bills, quite a few of them are already posted. Many sponsors decided to post them publicly on Sat, last Saturday. So I think there's 20-something bills already on there to have you as. You may, what is today? Today is Tuesday or Monday? What is today?
18/8.
Monday.
Monday.
Yes.
So you probably won't have time for council to even weigh in because who knows, we might be done by next Tuesday. So I, I just want you to know that you could go look at what's already available and just see if there's any big flags or suggestions or concerns there. You know, apologize for the short timeframe.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Of those funding strategies you mentioned, are any of them particularly, like, are you particularly passionate about one or two of them? Do you think, are they your champions?
That I'm passionate about? Well, that's not a funding, well, it is a funding one.
Were you going to say Health School?
Yeah, yeah. The other, well, the other part of the vendor fee one, I failed to mention that is important. There was a change in the vendor fee cap in 2019. I think again, we did something in, I don't know what year, where it already eliminated the super high, big companies that are having more than $12 million a year in sales and use tax. So the big, big guys are already eliminated. But what we did back for the first cap was to have some of that, what we were bringing in, you know, before the cap versus what we could now bring in, eliminating some of that vendor fee. That difference was utilized to put in the Housing Development Grant Fund, which may be important to you. And so that was a good way for us to put that money from the sales and use tax fund kind of into this funding mechanism. We wanted to make sure in the, if we're eliminating the vendor fee, it's not really a fee. I hate to keep calling it a fee, but that's what it's called as long. It's not really a fee. It's a, I'm going to take a little bit of this before I pass it on to you thing. We wanted to make sure that that Housing Development Grant Fund stays whole into the future. And so there's a second part of this bill that speaks to that to make sure that that amount as a percentage of what it started as remains. So when you see that, that's what that's all about.
Anyone else? So we're going to go ahead and get started with the topics to be discussed. And the first one on our agenda is the regulation of recovery houses and sex offender regulations. And I don't know who's going to start this off. Put it on the agenda.
Sorry.
Was that you?
Sorry, giant bite.
You know Senator Wallace and I did not put that.
Yes, neither did Zach. Councilmember Popkin did, however, because I think we wanted to talk a little bit about what legislative solutions might be in the next session. So right now for the special session, but is that accurate?
Yeah, in concert with Councilwoman Chris as well.
Or Chris Reed?
They're both tagged in that one. So maybe we can start on the legislative side. And I'll just, on the legislative topic, I'll sort of, Councilwoman Chris, she has questions there. Obviously, you're all aware of kind of the situation we've been dealing with.
I don't know what Representative Wu is.
Can you give me a quick?
No.
Not really.
I mean, to be fair, I don't know if he does.
Uh huh, that's fair.
We did send a timeline and summary to everybody, but it's a pretty hefty document, which kudos.
And thank you, Chief Ardis, for putting that through. That was big work.
I may, I may know, actually.
Just go ahead. I, I think I actually am filled it up.
Well, we'll start with the legislative question and then maybe through osmosis, we can get to some more, some more of the situation there. So I'd be curious, I don't know if there's anything being considered in special session right now, but one would be curious to know if something, an update or an amendment to relevant Colorado laws that have enabled this situation to happen are being considered. And then looking ahead to the next session, like, what options are on the table? What have, particularly from your experience, like, what have you seen, how have you seen, like, legislation update state agency processes that clearly have had some holes, if not flaws? And then to kind of correct that. So I guess start with that and then we can kind of unpack the situation further.
The special session has a call in it that limits what we can.
Yeah, what I went through, we can't, we can't color outside the lines.
Okay. Supposedly for the next regular session.
The next regular session.
So the fully, fully defining the issue is, is part of where I think we still are in a way that we have people that have gone through the criminal justice side of things that are in the, under Sex Offender Management Board. They're, they're in that side. And then we have the recovery residence oversight and implementation that's on the behavioral health administration side. And so as was, as I was getting information on what happened in North Glenn too, to try to understand how these two people that fall into both categories are kind of tangled up in this, in this overlap or this meshing of that. So just recently, as you've seen from the emails, knowing that there was an effort to at least address some of this last session that I, honestly, the rest of us had no idea because if a bill doesn't get introduced and people are working on it, the rest of us may have no idea what those conversations were, what proposal there was, what the definition of the problem they were trying to fix in that particular situation. Which is why we reached out as best we could to colleagues to find out, is anybody working on this? Were they in the past? If so, is it coming forward? And that was the most recent information that I've shared with you all is that last year was Representative Byrd and that were working on this. And apparently there was some issues with the governor's office. And I apologize, I can't tell you what those issues are, but we are still trying to find that out. And I think C M L, your C M L contacts might be able to have, share more light on what obstacles they ran up against. But aside from that, I think we're still dealing with this issue of the Behavioral Health Administration's. The Behavioral Health Administration's um reaching, you know, having an agency that then looks after big, you know, recovery residents through CAR. And since CAR is not a state agency. You know, we get into these problems of how do we, how do we get information from them? And then how do we hold the Behavioral Health Administration accountable for any missteps or miscommunications? Or not following their own rules? And part of that may or may not be through. Well, it is partly through the state legislature where we um keep hammering them and and asking questions. We have the SMART Act hearings that come in January and February, uh, which stands for State Measurable Accountability and. Something R, uh, reporting. Um. Those are sometimes almost like inquisitions when we have a particular issue that needs sunlight on it. And so throughout this summer, I've been collecting some of the things that I wanted to bring forth during the SMART Act. Because BHA is under the the Health Committee in the Senate and the House. I'm on the Health Committee in the House. So I will have that opportunity to at least keep going for it. We are, I think we're both still waiting. I'm waiting for a specific answer from the Attorney General's Office about who has kind of enforcement. Capacity for state agencies to uh follow their own rules and regulations, but also to follow state law. So I I can't answer that specifically. We don't have the ability to like fine BHA or.
Unless you would like it entirely eliminated, the which, and our second agenda item, I believe, is about mental health funding, right? Which is predominantly what the BHA does. So unless you want them to not exist, we don't, that's that's where, that's the oversight.
Yeah, we can ha- we can pass new laws, we can amend laws.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, that that takes really defining what exactly it is we want to amend. And building a coalition of support for that particular change in law.
And doing the, cause I think some of the problem here, right, is this is a uh. The state level coming in and telling locality is what to do, right? That's kind of the premise, that's being sort of, you know, we're, that's the tension that we're trying to draw through here. And so that given, right, we'd be making another state law. Are we gonna be in in approaching on your local ordinances, right? Things and and I I wanna mention too that the one of the, one of our laws that were passed, the residential recovery ones. And the occupational, the removal of occupational limits didn't stop this residence from being regulated, right? You all passed an ordinance that regulated it on the basis of those folks being sex offenders, right? But that, that's the tension that we would have to be trying to pull through at the state level too, is we're gonna be telling the whole state what to do. And so not to say that that can't happen, right? Not to say that legislation can't be looked at. And that's why we're in conversation with our colleagues who are pursuing that. But that's the tension on this.
Yeah, no, I get that. Maybe I'll just one follow up then on that. So, Councilwoman Chris, um. I'm not sure there's necessarily a need for a new law. It's, I think, what we've been trying to unpack is. How do we miss, uh, enforce the existing premises and the existing law? That seems to be very clear about the process that BHA was supposed to follow. Uh, and when or when they were supposed to certify these residents. And so we can get into those facts if it's helpful, but. I I'm not inherently asking for a new long if law if it's not necessary to just enforce, and it's already on the books.
Yeah. There there's also, um, this is something I haven't explored yet, but occurred to me over the last week or so is um. There are ways to go through the Legislative Audit Committee to to ask for um a specific audit process of a state agency. Um, I'm not on that committee, but that is something that we can find out. Uh, their ability to dive deeper through an official audit of the agency, which might. Get to some of those questions that you're asking.
Because their whole goal is interpretation of the law, right, that we've set down. How is the law being interpreted and implemented by the state agencies? Um, and they they do a whole load of work in that, right? But that's part of what their system is set up to do, is how is this being implemented and why? And is this being interpreted as the state legislature set out?
And then they hold, they have a whole report that that gives them certain dates to fix things or set up. Uh, different um procedures so that whatever they found um in violation of their audit is not, does not happen again. So they do those sorts of things too. So this could be an avenue to go.
I'll just say too, uh, just in a quick addition, that the SMART Act hearings, all of us can wave ourselves onto there, right? So though Rep McCormick has a permanent place on the Health Committee, I can wave onto there too, and we can kind of tag team this. Um, in addition to a lot of questions that I have with BHA in particular in terms, certainly in terms of this, right, which, oh, I might just underscore that too, right? Of, we have been engaging, we brought BHA in here, right? We've been engaging throughout and we have no intention of leaving the conversation, which is the key oversight that we can provide. Of insisting that these questions be answered, that we clarify what, why the law was interpreted, how it was. Um, and when, when their kind of oversight of this would have come into play, which are questions that we have out to them. They're working with partner agencies, including the twentieth Judicial District, who made the choice to put these folks here, or would have worked in conjunction with the folks putting themselves here. Um, in terms of where they were housed, right? So, uh, there's a lot of layers here of government and bureaucracy. I understand that's hard to navigate. We're committed to staying in those conversations and ensuring that folks have those answers, whether that be in the SMART Act hearing in January or right now. Um, and it certainly, you know, we've not let, we've asked for those answers from BHA and will continue to do so.
Could I ask another question that more on the legislative side of that?
Yes, of course.
So it seems like there are two bills that created this situation, right? The one around, you know, removing the restrictions for people to be related in housing. And then the sober living facilities, vague so being exempt from local zoning laws. Any appetite for just fixing one of those?
Well, I have a follow up question. Um, I I think, well, first I'll answer the first one about occupancy limits. I think there was such a statewide push on that for seniors, for students. For all kinds of people that are dealing with the cost of housing to be able to have unrelated people. Um, you know, when I'm eighty, I might need six roommates to pay for my, you know.
Yeah.
So there was such a drive for that, that I don't think there's an appetite to undo that because of the the need. Um.
Although I will just, I I'll just pass in really quick, that that didn't seem to be a barrier to the ordinance that was passed, right? So I I might challenge a little bit just the premise that like that state law created the problem, right? It it didn't create a problem to the intervention for you all. You all were still able to make that intervention based on public health and safety, right? So thank you for that work and look at that, the state law didn't get in your way.
My follow up question back is my understanding of the recovery homes, recovery residents being um. I might have this wrong, so I remember with um Chief Artist, we had a phone call about this. That folks in recovery with substance disorders, if they're not um. If they're not on any substances, that they fall under the protections of the ADA. And that applies to um employment and housing and all kinds of 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 services that they are. Um, able to access. And so having um. Discriminations in housing about where those recovery homes can be. I I wasn't involved with that bill, but it seems like that bill was in response to those folks now having somewhat of a protected. Status under the ADA if they follow, uh, they're they're not using. So do I have that interpretation right? So that that, so undoing that could run afoul of ADA law.
Yeah. And I do think this, the Colorado Municipal League, so I did a little checking and and Zach and I looked at what they were talking about presenting. The way that Colorado Municipal League works is they put a call out to all cities to say, what would you like for CML to sponsor? Cities then give suggestions, the CML board decides what they're gonna sponsor for that year. So it's not like the board just decides themselves, it's an all call.
Does Longmont have an outside's vote on that?
Uh, yeah, no. Okay, same vote as all the other cities, yeah. Um, but the city of North Glenn is the one that has asked now this next legislative session to put forth. And I think, I think it's just regulating sex offenders though, right? Meaning the localities.
Well, no, I, is it, or is it, or is it the regulation?
No, so I have the pendulum this year.
You have a what?
Pendulum this year.
This is for the next session.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just wanna clarify a couple of things. So I don't, I think we're, again, we're mixing two issues here.
Yes.
Senator Wallace, what you're talking about is we're able to regulate the number of sex offenders that can live in any residence within city law.
Right.
Has nothing to do with recovery homes. What I think of.
But it does apply to this particular case and this particular recovery.
It does, but I think we're talking about recovery homes in general because we have additional recovery homes. What?
But this is the predominant one that we're talking about and that we've been asked to address.
Right, but I I think what what we're talking about is holistically about recovery homes is general, right? I understand we're talking about this one, we were able to limit.
Okay. I wish we had separated out the agenda points then to say recovery homes and sex offenders rather than lumping them.
Okay.
But I'm sorry for interrupting, it's a good point.
Yeah, we can.
Because we're talking about them as one, as one.
Yeah, but but they're not. And and so I, in my document that you got, tried to to lay that out, that there was multiple issues with this. You are correct, city law not creating an ordinance that limits the number of sex offenders can live in a recovery home or any other type of residential structure we have here. What I, what I think that one of the questions, what Sandy was trying to get to, and maybe I'm incorrect, is because the change in the relationship of individuals. We as a city, based on our zoning, used to be able to restrict the number of unfamiliar people live. So while residents or recovery residents are allowed based on some changes in residential areas, we could have lent, limited the number of people there. Meaning you could only have, let's just say, five versus ten, fifteen or twenty, based on number of recovery. So I think one of the questions is potentially next legislative session, is there consideration? Or is there potential conversation that can take place about allowing cities to limit the number of familiar folks again? Cause we got rid of that piece, right? So in this case, we were able to limit the number based on sex offenders that live in this recovery home. Other recovery homes, we don't have that ability. And so I think that becomes the question is, is there an appetite? Is there a conversation that might be able to take place where we restrict the number of individuals that are not familiar, living back within residences again?
Okay, that's really good. Um, thank you for clarifying that. And I think because that. Bill, I haven't seen the CML bill language, but because it is addressing recovery residences, it is, it is. That um, that discussion would very easily fit within the co- confines of that bill. And that would be something that the city of Longmont, as part of the voice of CML. Should bring forward to that coalition.
Yes.
Because that is, that is an important thing to start to discuss. And it's very relevant. And I I I get how it's different than me as an eighty year old having six roommates.
Different, yeah.
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 There is an appetite to, I'm sure, and I don't, I'm not the bill sponsor and I'm not, but I I bet that.
Is that what you saw? Oh, are you the bill sponsor of this one?
No, I'm just saying I have an appetite for lasting with the time.
Why is when you have the the bill language is, this is what the bill's language says? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so I have it. So if you, if you looked on my timeline, I just did a synopsis for August thirteenth of what that says. And basically what it was is.
Like page forty two or something.
Yeah, so required, so what what the bill would require is that anyone, a placement of a registered sex offender by the Colorado Department of Affairs offices. At a mental health transition living facility, which is not what we're talking about.
Right.
Be located at least a thousand feet from the school. So it's not the same thing as a recovery home. And so one of the things that I wanna point out is, I know you talked about the twenty two initials probation and parole. These individuals weren't physically placed there by probation or parole. They were offered as an alternative for living, meaning that if you're looking for somewhere to live. These individuals, cause there are some other individuals that offer housing to sex offenders, you can move into and live. And so I just wanna make sure that we're clear that these, they're not being forced to live here. This is an option. If now if they could find somewhere else to live.
Yeah, right. But their, their housing does have to be approved by those folks, right? They have to clear it. They're charged with finding it, they're not being placed somewhere.
Yeah, they are one third of the treatment team and probation does need to approve.
Right, right, but they're, but but the twentieth judicial is not going, Zach, you have to live here.
Right, right, but they are consulting with them and and then approving.
Ultimately.
Yeah, they are ultimately approving.
I should also say that, you know, I saw all those bills come through and individually, they sounded like a great idea.
Yeah.
You know, the council never opposed either of those bills.
Exactly.
Um, you know, because it it is the culmination of things that has has created the situation.
I think that's what I was gonna say, is we have our ordinance, uh, ordinances that have us in that regulatory mode. What happens is this breaks a piece, this breaks a piece, this breaks a piece. And then our ordinances don't function because what you don't have is that mechanism to catch some of these things as they're coming through the system. And I think that's really what we're saying in this, is it was two in particular that really then broke our local ordinances. Because things then could weave through the cracks. And I think behind all of this, what we're talking about is. There's also a point where things weaving through the cracks actually creates life safety issues. Um, because when when we talk about, and I'm gonna use the word, and there's so many words for this, but when we have multiple people living in a home. The question is, how many's too many? How was a home designed for that? Do they need fire, in in residential spring for systems? Does our fire department know how many people are in the house that in the event, in a situation? It actually starts creating like safety issues because we're not aware of actually what's happening. And some will say, well, is that different than? You know, a family in in a home. Part of what then triggered this was it came into a building permit review that was unclear. Didn't say this was what was going to happen. It just said, here's a bedroom. And and because of this, I think they're like, well, we can do it. We're not telling you, it creates a completely different issue that we're now trying to reconcile.
It's one thing with of a family of seven or eight. It's another thing with eight people who are unrelated and in their own.
Yeah, and so there's a lot of pieces in this. And I think this is generally, I think what we found is. It's kind of municipalities have their system set and there may be just something that breaks it. That actually creates challenges for us, of which people take advantage of on a regular basis. We're constantly dealing with this. Um, through planning and building inspection. And people don't even get their normal building permits when they when they add something. And so. That's, I think, what they're talking about is, and I think it would be, cause there are ADA issues that we have to follow in this, but just something that. Allows, you know, the congregant living to go through the city system so that there are some checks and balances in that process.
Well, in their language, in their proposed um bill, just to be clear, in definitions, are mental health transitional living facilities. The same as recovery residences or they fall into the same category?
So the the language for the bill that was drafted by the two representatives in CML, uh, doesn't clarify that.
Yeah.
So there is no, there is no defined definition of what what they're called.
Okay, so there's, there's an opportunity for clarification.
Yeah, and and we're gonna make a CML definition here.
Honestly, that's what we need to clarify is where are we and what are we?
Yeah.
Because um, when you have sex offenders, that should be the primary rather than recovery. And I'll say why, because we had this discussion in our, in July twelfth, is why are we giving them a diagnosis? And then they're on a registry, so now everybody knows about that diagnosis. And diagnoses are supposed to be private. So we're mixing apples and oranges to the non benefit of the residents there, the non benefit of the city's processes. And really, if you have a, are on the sex offender registry, that should be primary. And everything else, even if you're in recovery, should be kept secret and private and not completed with that ordinance and that's living situation.
Back, back to this um bill though, um, Carol, I I do think that. There's opportunity here to not only clarify what we're talking about, but also to bring in this piece of a suggestion. And see what the other cities think about that, that this is. You know, you're suggesting potentially a carve out for certain types of homes. That that won't affect kind of the the original impetus behind the, you know. that that won't affect kind of the the original impetus behind the, you know, raising the cap. If, you know, students and old people, um I I think that's, it, from what I can tell, it would fit. And it's worth having that discussion to see.
We are gonna meet with.
You would need the coalition to to get behind it.
We're gonna meet with CML after this, after this dinner and.
Tonight?
No, no. We're not done yet. Probably not quite.
No.
But council member Popkin is our representative on the CML policy committee, so we'll include him on anything that that we talk about. Because this is Northland's, this is Northland's proposal, so he would like to to have been there and make some suggestions.
No, I understand, yeah. Well, and that's how coalitions build, and that's how amendments get added, is the more people that are aware of the discussion and the particulars of their community, the the better a particular bill can get, so.
And the further it can get too, right? Cause it sounded like last time, this kind of came to a brick wall before it even really got going, um and so happy to.
We don't know what.
Yeah, I don't know why either, but. Yeah, well, but perhaps we can bring a bit of a different coalition behind that. Thank you, I appreciate that consideration.
A better awareness of what the, what it's like in the field in in municipalities.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, this is very helpful.
Yeah, we can stay in touch on the CML piece, I I wanted to wrap up with one more question, unless you were still going.
Well, I'd like to hear what your next topic is, because I may gotta say about that.
I don't think she had much of a chance.
Yeah, that didn't have much of a chance.
Right, Travis, so please, you jumped in first, I wanted to.
Okay, so you think the CML legislation is the way to clarify all this?
It is the perfect opportunity because it's already rolling down the tracks. And um.
But how long does that type of legislation take? Like, it's going into regular session, right, which is at the beginning of the year.
Well. Regular, how long does it take?
Yeah.
Um it depends on the bill, depends on if it'll have any, it shouldn't have any fiscal impact, so that helps you.
Depends on the bill. Depends on the bill, yeah. Support.
So it might be signed in April?
Oh gosh, you need to want me to pull out my crystal ball.
Before.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
But I'm saying that's usually when every legal letter on the table.
Yeah, well, and I don't know when the governor's office, you know, it's gotta have a path to a signature by the owner.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I don't know what the issues were last year that somehow did not even let it get introduced.
Also, just.
Yeah, so that would be helpful to know is, how do we, how do we sweeten the pot here?
Yeah.
How do we, you know, impress these months of working on this?
Yeah, building them, yeah.
I mean, we look at Chief Artist, the information he gave us, which is eight pages long, and it's just a lot of, I don't know how many times you mentioned staff,
Also, just to know.
but it hurts my heart to think how much time you, you and your staff, and that's everyone, Harold, saying, I've put into this project.
Yeah, same, same. I agree.
You know, and and also with the council.
Well, sometimes bills get thought up, introduced, and signed in three months, and sometimes it takes five years. So it.
That seems right, it's a good span.
You know what I'm saying? It it takes, try, try again, it is a messy process.
And my fear is, it's going to seem like it's not urgent, when actually it is. I mean, our overheads have been coming to us week after week, saying we've got to, we've got to figure this out, yes.
That's the, that's the. And that's the coalition building, the more voices you have, the more um people showing up to tell stories in committee, the more bipartisanship you can get. Uh that also puts, you know, pressure up the chain, so.
So out of the three of you, are you all on board with this idea?
I'm on board.
With which, with.
With the idea of bringing forth the CML legislation to define those two separately, recovery homes from, um separate, which.
I'm always on board with looking at some policy, evaluating its impact.
Yes, we need to look at what the bill language, we need to see the bill language.
I I know, I know, we have to.
Yeah, but of course, absolutely, we'll always consider, especially as Longmont is on board, right? We're always happy to to look at the legislation that you all are bringing and advocating for and doing what we can to to see it through.
Yeah, but it does seem like there's a need on both sides to clarify this.
Yes.
And that it's a work of all recovery.
But I learned long ago, don't say yes and don't say no.
No, yeah, yeah, and also, we should be careful about um what we, as you all encountered with the ordinance that you all did too.
My attitude when you have the bill. Yeah.
There's limits to what we can do retroactively, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so I wanna be careful about promising this as a goal, that even if we fix everything that might have created, right? It it it, we we will be limited in how we can retroactively apply it.
It's for.
Constitutionally speaking, yes, which is, I would argue, a good thing because it means I can't say I don't like any of you and I'm gonna make laws to say what you're doing is illegal, right? That's a good thing to have and um no, you know, but we are, we will be limited by it, so we should be careful about what we can promise for what's occurred, right?
Well, we've spent a ti- a lot of time working with VHA and CAR, and it turns out that CAR is not a state agency, so that was very frustrating. But at what point do we work with the Department of Corrections where this maybe more falls under their arena?
Or the twentieth judicial district.
Yeah, twentieth judicial district.
Because that's, let's remember, right, that even if it was working in consultation with the the offenders, right? That's who approved and oversees their day-to-day lives.
Yeah.
Instead, and not VHA and not CAR.
Probation. Not at.
Right, not at all.
Not at all.
So why are we spending so much time on that certification and that line of inquiry? You see, how is it too really important to say it's this or it's that?
And it's very, it's very. Yes, and it's, and it, and this is, I think, what we were getting to in terms of wanting to separate out these things. Because it sounds like there are frustrations with the ways, this is the only recovery residence that I've heard about, right? Um and and it's very much, to me, it feels very um looped in with, and I know, Zach, you've told me about others, this is from directly from the constituents.
Mm-hmm.
This is the only recovery residence, so right now it's coming from city staff and from this group, this this community. And it's very tied in with the sex offender, the sex offenders that are living there, right? It's, so to once again do that work of trying to pull these, these two things apart, it sounds like there's city frustrations about recovery residences separate from sex offenders. It also sounds, and we we know for sure that the community is frustrated with where this group of sex offenders was placed, that was not a state decision. Our regulations around recovery residences and how we oversee those and how we register those have gotten pulled into it. Worth having those conversations and seeing how we can needle through what worked and what didn't in terms of local implementation. And again, it needs to be separated out from this particular house, this particular group of folks, um and and what it might, you know.
We have instances of uh recovery homes, we have instances of people who are uh transitioning back from from Department Corrections, we have homes, well, we have not had a problem with any of those
Right.
to the extent this, and I think it's because of the muddy waters and the, you know, who who actually oversees this and who
You mean, there hasn't been, in, sorry, what do you mean, you haven't had a problem with any of those and not because of the muddy waters?
Who should we be talking to about the rules? Well, not that I know of, certainly not in my world.
But is that because of a lack of oversight of them, or is that because they're having problems with them?
Uh have we had a problem with those for two?
Or maybe we don't know, two of us?
Um so I, I think, yeah, so I just wanna clarify, um so I think where the concern becomes, um again, I think the city of Longmont is taking appropriate steps that it feels necessary to address the sex offender issue.
Yeah.
We know it's not statewide, it's based based upon the municipality or county. I think where the concern and the question becomes, and I think this was even raised by both of you in this conversation, is is the VHA component, when we talk about just a recovery house, right?
Yeah.
And accountability piece of who is, who's monitoring, who's holding those houses accountable? I think that becomes a question of concern for us as a city, because that's the piece that in this process, minus the sex offenders, that was the piece that we didn't get the clear answers that we were looking for because their their private contractor or their contract on state, even though they fall under the same rules as Cora for any other state needed agency. I think that was a disconnect, and as as it moves from this to the Ohio recovery house, the question really become, I think, is what is, what is VHA doing to address this, so as we have, uh we have at least one, another recovery house in the pipeline, is it two? Um that are in the pipeline that we're working through, like the change of use, because we're going from the IRC, which is a register code, to the IBC, and we're having the staff to to turn on a dime because because of some legislative changes, is how do we now manage these things? Because they're now in a zoning area that they weren't allowed before.
Is that because of the timeline with which you have they changed from like suddenly they're recovery resident, is that, is that what you mean? Or or what is creating that, like turning on a dime fact, like turning?
Because they did not allow them previously in residential areas, so family residential areas. And because that house was traditionally built and monitored under the international uh recovery, like just the residential code,
Residential.
Now, all of a sudden, because it's being used for something different, the change of use is changing, we now have to look into the IBC. And so city staff is having to figure out that process where we not have that challenge in the past because they weren't allowed in residential areas. So I really think, and and again, council member Chris can correct me, I think the real question becomes is, we've taken the steps needed that council feels necessary to address the sex offender issue. The question is going into next legislative session is, what are we doing with VHA to truly understand the accountability piece? Or how they're certifying, how they're not? Because when we get into the the questions of the primary diagnosis of an individual's substance abuse treatment, well, that's the reason that they're there. The question becomes is who's verifying that?
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's so complicated because when you get into the IRC or the IBC, you know, there's questions of how do you, how do you regulate it from a life safety perspective? And typically you go, are they ambulatory, are they not ambulatory? You know, are they disabled, are they not disabled? And really, what you have to do is you have to, from a fire code perspective, actually regulate it potentially to the highest level. Because you don't know who's gonna be in there, and you don't know what's going on, and I think that's what Zach is saying, is that, that's what broke the system.
Okay.
And and so, and I mean, we see, my fire, the Michelle who just retired, they, they, you hear the stories. Fire codes are for reasons, cause somebody stopped it.
Mm-hmm.
And and the reality is, do they have the right alarm system? All of these things we need to know and make sure that they're in place, and if something happens, what happens when, or if they don't have those things? And now we're dealing with a real tragedy. Because we didn't have the right protective measures in place, and people got trapped in the basement or these other pieces. And I think that's a big piece of it, and it's the loopholes that broke it.
And just to put a finer point on what Zach was saying, it's not so much that it wasn't clear, it was also that VHA said, kind of responded to all of us, to both, to both of you, with inaccurate information, with an inaccurate timeline, with a lack of understanding of, I mean, in theory, their own process, of how they were supposed to certify this, when things were certified, who was living there when. And so it just doesn't lend itself to any credibility when this whole process in theory should have been set up. I mean, I mean, the whole process, the whole premise of these group homes and these uh recovery residences is to genuinely like create, rebuild trust in the people that lost it, right?
Mm-hmm.
With the community, and to be a good neighbor. And the whole process is in theory set up to, with all of these good neighbor guidelines, and the company that was involved in this had these good neighbor guidelines, and it seems like none of those were followed. And so the confusion and this management, the lack of accountability, and and I'm not putting this on you guys, cause you've, you've gotten some of, you've, you've kind of brought out some of this information in itself of who knew what, when, and who said what about what process. And we have the, um of our solutions misrepresenting a certification on March sixth, we have CAR then saying it was certified on March twenty-fifth.
Mm-hmm.
We have VHA then saying it was not certified on March thirty-first, uh and April first, April Tuesday. Um then the VHA said uh it was certified through CAR, and then it was also certified as a home under SO and D, which is not even a thing that they can do. And then the.
And I, that part was our misunderstanding. That particular part was our misunderstanding because before, what if it was May?
Oh, that that piece there, okay, thank you for correcting.
It was, it was, we met with them.
Yeah.
They shared information. We had a, we walked away.
Okay, that was just a, sorry.
We misinterpreted because this was not our, you know.
Because there are a lot of agencies, this is a, a large agency, no problem, yeah.
Well, plus, we were just almost like brand new to that field.
That's totally fine, thank you, thank you for correcting.
So that, I'm gonna take full responsibility for that.
Okay, sure, but but then we still have VHA saying, I think in response to you all and the the July twelfth event that you all helped organize, um that it was not operating before March twenty-ninth, and that they didn't have residents living there. And we know that because of the sex offender registry that uh Zach put together, that we know they were living there as early as, what, January twelfth, and as late as, and moved in as late as February twelve or some twenty-first.
And, yeah, and before that really came to us. So they were all living there.
Yeah.
And we like our processes, okay, we just, if it's not our processes, we cannot function.
Right.
Yeah, and. No, I, we totally understand. Totally understand, well, and I think some of this too is what's, what's bad bureaucracy versus corrupt bureaucracy, right? And kind of pulling that out of what, of what, where things got caught up versus intentionally misresonated or misread, like.
I don't think there was mal-intent, to be clear, I think there, you know, when we talk about what the law interpret as it was, I think it just, their process wasn't followed as is plainly written. And they have a process that says there's a cease and desist letter that is is issued to an entity if it's operating without certification.
Yeah.
That's like the current law.
Yes, and I think what we're trying to kind of parse through with them, with other agencies that they, that that we have involved, right? Is what qualifies exactly as operating, right? Was it marketing itself as a recovery residence, was it, right? And what, what is that triggering when? Is it when somebody applies for it and says, hey, I'm operating this? Is it when people move in, right? And those are questions that we have remaining out to VHA, um as well as to the really different.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, either way, they said the house didn't have anyone living there at the time of certification, right? Or before certification, so like, regardless of the operational status and when, when it's, you know, when is it a a duck versus a chicken?
Well, everybody was like, yeah.
Like, that, that, they still didn't have that clean, right? And so I guess maybe can I offer a question to both of you, to either ask like the Attorney General's Office or for the uh accountability hearings? Um and I'd offer this, uh why should we as a city and community trust that the certifications and programs are safe, verifiable, and effective when agencies can't even get that fact straight? I'm not assuming mal-intent here, but there's, there's a certification process for a reason, and it's to protect all of the very things that we've been talking about and for the people who are moving in, who want to rebuild that trust, and in theory, the operators of that home, and the community of us.
Community.
And so, like, where where does that, like, where does that get held to the process that is already in existence? So that, like.
I'm, I'd be happy to answer, ask that question in the smart act hearings, I also think that, you know, I'm happy to ask it now too.
Yeah.
You all are on those chains with VHA, I would also ask, you know, do you wanna put that question into VHA and help us continue this conversation, right? Because I think, one, I think part of what I have struggled with is a a long chain of telephone, right? Of trying to keep everything, you know, being inundated, and then trying to keep everything straight, trying to make sure all of the questions are being addressed,
Yes. Yes.
Which is why we're not leaving the conversation as I led with, right? Because we know that there's gonna be further questions, further clarifications, and questions that maybe they missed. So I would just say, I'm happy to put that in, also, do you wanna chime in and ask them that question? And we can help hold them accountable to these, this, the representation that you're giving to the local constituents.
Yeah, man, I'm happy to chime in, or at least I'd be.
Yeah, if I can tag team on that, it's.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We understand your frustration because we've had it too. The thing is, you have more control and authority over these agencies than we do. We have tried.
Oh, over VHA, yes, right, yeah, yeah.
Yes, we have tried to get responses from them to no avail, but because you are basically their bosses, you know, to some degree,
And you know why?
Oh, and we know why.
Yes.
To some degree, you have to find out which agency you um has enforcement, but you, you are, it is of the law, so.
Yeah. And we, we are, we are so here for you, and that's, that's why this, that's why we keep showing up and keep answering and keep asking.
Yeah.
And so, um I think we don't have to wait for the smart hearing, I mean, this is.
Cause that's.
This, 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 this lack of um this inability to communicate clearly, um has led to a a whole lot of this. So, um I understand that, yeah, there's, you don't have any reason to trust at this point. So is there a way to um start to rebuild that somehow? Is is how we need to really continue this, so yeah, no, I would say at this point in time, I can't get it.
Yeah, right, absolutely, and and has been a lot of my in writing and direct feedback to VHA is that.
Yes, and thank you, I mean, you just brought us, bring, bring a lot of this forward, at this level.
Right, right. Yes, and we understand, you know, we all under, we all are elected, a lot of us are elected representatives, right?
Yeah.
Coming from this and understanding that a a a big part of this is just being responsive to folks and saying, hey, I'm working on this. And the fact that the city faced that, the constituents faced a lack of that, that the constituents did, right? I had to make calls to get the Cora requests closed out, right? That that, I had to do that, right?
Thank you, and I see how you have one say.
Of course, how you could do it, and that's the oversight that we can provide. If we're talking about where we're bosses of this agency, this is where we are, right? It's somewhat limited to this, happy to help continue those conversations, get the links we need, advocate on y'all's behalf, and either throw in those questions ourselves or help uplift them from them.
I'll offer wherever you think you'll be most pronunciously directed.
I think we're gonna need the whole half day to get wooed up today.
Yes.
Yeah.
We're forward to all the challenges.
And listen, I I've hated that local control a lot for you guys, so just, I mean, I'm here, I'm here, seriously.
We have.
We appreciate, yeah.
We appreciate it.
We can feel you.
But I do need to get a little more.
We can.
And, and thank you, I actually, I apologize, I have two kids at home that need to be fed.
And, and thank you. I actually, I apologize, I have two kids at home that need to be fed, so I need to leave. But I will follow up and I'm gonna definitely get caught up on all this. I mean, I definitely-
You didn't leave them a microwaveable meal?
They don't have meals. They just came from moms. I don't shut up.
Would you like to take some food? Take some food. That's kind of like a shake of like, yeah.
But anyway, I will follow up and thank you guys, and I will be at some meetings soon, so it's good to meet you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
And I, I did want to just, while I'm drinking, considering laws, are there assistance in this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have been very responsive. He has a today, his own phone, Senator Wallace clarified an email.
Yeah.
It wasn't for me, but I am, I am grateful for both of them. They have been very responsive to staff to help us try to answer through this. So I look forward to having additional conversations with them through this year and then through next legislative session as different things come up. So again, thank you very much for your cooperation.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate you too.
I just wanna say one thing. I've been quiet, but they, they say a lot.
Yeah.
Um, that I don't need to say that the only thing that I really wanna emphasize is the reason why we're so passionate about this, the reason why our community is so passionate about this is we are trying to prevent the, oh my goodness, this has happened. And whatever we need to do to be consistent, to be, to have preventatives and protect our community, that's what we need to do. Um, I know I don't want it to come back on our community to say, oh, well, you didn't follow this, you didn't follow that. And here we are, who and all, yes, we did. You told us this, you told us that. And so we wanna make sure that everything is correct to where we have followed all the guidelines, have done everything we needed to do so that our community can be protected the best way possible. And I know you all want the same thing. So that's all I have to say. So, thank you for all that you have done.
I know.
We've been in those fees, email fees, and you all have been on it. So I wanna say from, from me to you, both of you, thank you so much. And I know at first it was kind of like over the top, like, okay, what are they talking about? And I know it was a lot of confusion because it was confusion for us.
Yeah.
And so thank you for just pulling the needles out of the haystack and trying to find it and, and find some resolve. And, um, that means a lot because that means that we have someone that we can look up to and call that is responsive to us, to our needs, our questions, and our suggestions and our comments. So that means a lot.
Looking for solutions. I appreciate, you know, looking for, for solutions. Well, I think we've learned a lot, and we're not done with learning, so.
We have all learned a lot, that's.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, you had said something, one of you had said something about, um, you know, having those conversations with BHA to ensure that the law is interpreted as it was intended to be. So we need to make sure that we're kind of all looking at this in the same lens. So I'm wondering, you know, and I, and thank you for the timeline too, because it goes scroll back and forth.
Oh my gosh.
And so I'm, I'm looking at, okay, well, where, oh, it kind of veers off in this direction because it could, you know, the law could have been interpreted a certain way. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so making sure that we are all looking at this through the same lens, that BHA is looking at this through the same lens. And the other one is having definite, or you know, having finite definitions for mental health transitional, sober living. What do all these, these, what do they mean? And and that we're all looking at it and having the same understanding of the terminology. So if there isn't misconception.
And that's part of, that's part of the conversation to have with CML.
Yeah. Yes, yes, yes.
And it's terminology for the sake of clarifying what the certification and what the program is actually for.
For, yes, exactly.
And, and to ensure that what the state is regulating is for the right purpose, what we are regulating is for the right purpose, and that that is, there's no gray area there.
There you run through this one. Yes, yes.
These are very challenging issues to manage
Yes.
from a public health standpoint in general, like in different ways. And you should take different strategies for different situations.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh, I would say, no, thank you across the board, in case you're wondering, papers, it's the timeline.
Uh, so I was just looking at it, I just had to make it really big.
Yeah. I'm old fashioned, I make a hard copy.
Just the time I do. Okay. So any other comments, questions? Okay, so we are ready, and I've kind of like, kind of sparse out forty, forty, forty. So, um, looking at the mental health funding and Boulder County proposed sales tax.
So Mayor Peck asked to put this on there, even though she was gonna be out of town today. She said, I'm sure you guys will have a great, robust conversation about it.
Without the commissioners here.
Yeah, the commissioners here. And I think her thought was, I think she has concerns about the proposal, staff has concerns about the proposal. Um, I know they pushed it off a week to try to gather some more comments, which we appreciated. I think she was just curious, your, your thoughts on the proposal. Um, and the idea is that they would like to levy a sales tax or mental health assistance, but it's, it's not very clear what, what that means. And so I, I think she was curious, your thoughts, and I think obviously the budget creates all kinds of issues when it comes around funding, funding for mental health. And I think from a staff perspective, there are some things that we think could happen that would really help a lot of folks. And I think we have some, some thoughts around that. Christina has more thoughts than I do. Um, but I think her question was just, what, what is your general thought about the proposal, if you're familiar with it? And your thoughts about mental health?
Yeah. So on a, a high level, yes, I'm familiar. And my questions, um, to Commissioner Levy through an email were concerned with kind of the backstory to how this came about. Like, how did they come up with this number? Where, where would the oversight on the funding be? Is this truly gonna meet the need, um, going forward? Because once we ask the voters, it's hard to keep asking them if we haven't hit the right number. Um, she shared back with me, and then I, yeah, I don't know how many of you know Kathy Partridge here in town, who has been, I had a long conversation with her yesterday about some of the backstory that goes back to, I think, twenty seventeen or before, where there was a working group or a, I forget what they call.
Supporting Action for Mental Health.
Supporting Action for Mental Health, which was a result of, um, a murder, suicide, and the, um, the woman who was pregnant on the Craigslist.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that was kind of a result of community conversations that came out of that.
Yes, yes.
And then Supporting Mental Health was kind of, um, created.
Great, well, um-
That's, that's a local, I mean, it was a local, yes.
It was a local.
Yeah, it was Boulder County, right?
No, I was in City of Long Island.
No, it was, yeah.
It was City of Long Island.
Yeah.
All this happened in a period of about a week and a half?
Yeah, not even that long.
That started it.
That started it.
The other one too, Christina, give up one on North Main that was also very close to that.
Did those trigger? Yes, yes.
Several situations that clearly indicated the air assistance.
Three situations.
Okay.
In the community.
And it was Julie who read that, um, Julie just, yes, I can't remember the last name, I remember Lacy. Yeah, she, she looped me in on that one too, so. So great work from all the people involved with that. Um, it was good to learn about that. I honestly didn't know that, that good work had been happening. And that, um, identifying the needs and kind of where in the community whether organizations, nonprofits could start to kind of address those needs. And then we were able to direct, um, a good deal of ARPA funding, I guess, that came in during a pandemic through the county to really help get some of those programs going. And, and step in if I'm missing some key parts, because this is just after my conversation with Kathy yesterday. And the, the concern and the need for putting this on the ballot now, what would my question to Commissioner Levy was, are we simply filling the hole of the ARPA funds that are now gonna be gone? That some of these, uh, agencies and organizations have started, um, some really great programs in committee, community to address many of the needs that you all identified? And that we don't want those to fall off now that they're really getting going? Um, or is this number that they came up with to not only do that in, as a, to fill a hole, but also to look for growth in the future, for future needs on, and how that will be spent? And so, you know, at first I was really hesitant about, um, how this came about and the, and the why, and also the transparency of, of where is it going exactly? And how much good is it doing? Do we have some, again, measurable, accountable data on how many people in Boulder County are we currently helping? What is the gap that we're trying to fill? And of course, I talk a lot with my good friend Senator Judy Mobley, who has come out hot against, against, so I was hearing her input too about, um, we're, we're missing a piece for those that really have more severe problems and, you know, bringing in the discussion about, and I'm not a hundred percent sure about what Larimer County has done with their fee, that are their tax that they put forward. And they have a facility, and that was Senator Mobley's point, that, you know, we have an opportunity if we're going to the voters to ask for a tax increase, why not go for the, the, you know, reach for the stars while we have the chance and outline the why? So after speaking with Kathy yesterday and hearing from Senator Mobley last week that the discussion at the commissioners, I think they ran out of time to vote. It wasn't that they were gonna wait for more input, that they ran out of time because they allowed so much input. There was a proposal to potentially consider a timeframe for this, this, um, tax. And to have the opportunity, I think they threw out three years, but I kind of agree that three years is really not a lot of time to have a, a good look back, um, to allow the citizens that potentially may vote this through a chance to have that, that input. Is it working? How much is it working? Uh, do we need to renew this, increase it? Um, I think whenever you give the voters another chance at something, um, down the road at some point, it's, it's always a better sell. And also it gives those, um, kind of in the works, the ability to understand what might have been missing. So I'm a little more swayed to potentially support this, this, um, going forward with a, a date, a sunset in mind, um, so that we could have the voters revisit it. And I know that, that funding will, you know, agencies and organizations will depend on that. So of course they're gonna wanna keep it going, and that's a hard thing. But we were told even with the ARPA funds, to consider it one time dollars, people. This is one time dollars at the state level, it should have been one time dollars at the, the county level.
It was my time dollars, city level.
And of course, nobody did that. Yeah, yeah. So, um, I, I know that's a long-winded way of saying that I'm still listening, um, and still willing to consider the, the positives that may come out of this. And, um, but, but I, I do like a sunset. I think it's an opportunity for us to revisit. And I am concerned about the things that Senator Mobley went up. Um, Kathy said that our community, our county may not have the, the, uh, population of, of high acuity, acuity needs of people to, I don't know, in comparison with Larimer County, like their facility compared with. Like, I said, well, that's a good question. You know, would our county be able to, um, have enough? Because where, where, where do those numbers come from? Like, where did she get that assertion?
I don't know. Like, I was- Who, Kathy?
Kathy, that.
Well, I would wanna check with Larimer County, like, there's, there's a county right next door that has been through this.
Yeah.
They, they've gotta have data that drove them to have a tax that did what they did.
Yes.
So.
And then wondering, you know, the number of people who are undiagnosed because they don't go to the doctor or they, because they can't even access mental health care.
Right.
So they're just kind of out there, you know?
So, yeah, so how is it working?
And I know this from personal experience.
They don't do, and that's, so does Judy. And so how is it, how did it come about in Larimer County and how was it working?
Yes.
And did they ask for enough?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Jody.
When they, when they passed. So I didn't get answers from, um, Commissioner Levy or Kathy on those questions.
This might be my ignorance on this, on the proposal, but has this ever been attempted before in Boulder County or no?
Um, this particular tax?
Yeah.
No, it's been talked about for years because there was a push to do what Larimer County did, um, some.
At least not in the last thirty years.
Thank you for that. There's some history.
Is that around a lodging tax in particular for mental health or just a lodging tax generally in the last thirty years?
Um-
Specifically for mental health.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And the current proposal is for it to be perpetuated?
Yeah.
And it's sort of, it feels unclear, I think, from the language.
Oh, yeah.
What is this to go for? Will cities have some opportunity to tap into those?
Yes.
Yeah, how would you qualify?
Yeah, what about wraparound services and housing? Because that's my cut, and so is there some we carve out that could be for people who are in support of housing?
Well, I think, you know, so I'm on the, um, Boulder County opioid council. And so what, what we're finding in that to this point is, how are you evaluating duplication of the services? Because we're constantly seeing duplication of services.
Right.
You know, how does that play into, you know, some of us have, uh, leading for programs, which we did, actually came out of the mental health work, and when we created that. But, so, so how do you reconcile that with other groups? And, and, you know, we're struggling with it on that, on the opioid side, going, how do you measure, how do you measure the outcomes?
Yes.
And I think this-
I kept asking that same question, how do you know when you started with the ARPA funds, what it's doing? And how, how well it's working? And I just got, well, they're too new and they're just-
Well, frankly, there's a, a bigger problem underlying this because, you know, today we're talking about mental health. When you look at health and human service funding generally, I mean, the county has cut a large amount. Um, you know, Boulder County Health, they had to cut twenty percent of their budget. Um, our health and human service funding is all being stretched because of the budget issues we're dealing with. And, and I think underlying all of that is we have more nonprofits being created.
Yes.
And we have more nonprofits that didn't request public funds that are now requesting public funds. And we have more nonprofits coming in, and so the pie is just continuing to shrink. And so, how are you defining what you want? How do you measure your outcomes, you know? It's just, it's, I think all of that has to come into play.
And I think the other piece to that is that we can eas, more easily measure the, the intervention piece of things. So how do we keep, um, people from, um, you know, cycling up to hospitalization? And what, um, what kind of, uh, supports that we can put in? That's easy data to, um, to, to really measure. I think the other piece of that, which we saw with the opioid funds, that is also, um, really key um, in this area are the prevention efforts. So that's, so, so tackling it from different, um, you know, prevention, um, intervention, I think looking at that whole continuum of services is ultimately going to, um, going to have an impact. And so to your, your point, um, three years isn't gonna show us that. You know, I'd argue that ten years might not even show us that. And so being really clear on what the dollars are gonna be used for, what it is that will be measured, um, and adding that piece of the, the duplication of services is, is huge.
It is key, and the, the language that is presented to the voters doesn't, doesn't go into all of those important pieces. Yeah, yeah. And that's frustrating, and which is also what I said to the commissioners. It's that you're, you're, you're not doing a very good job of, of selling what you want. And, um, you know, I, I use the term and I got, um, chastised for it. But I said, it feels like we're asking for funds, and then it's gonna be spread around like peanut butter. And I don't know, like, are we really gonna have an impact? Did you use the peanut butter thing too?
Different, yes.
Okay. And I, you know, is that gonna have enough of an impact of what we're trying to do to help people? So, are they gonna take the food away? So I'm gonna get it.
I know, that's what.
I'm gonna get it just to.
Outside, we could, if we wanted to, Mayor Proton, if you just wanted to take a time out.
Yeah, we could take a break.
Could everybody just take a plate to take home?
Yeah.
Go have lunch to take with him.
Yes.
That would make me feel really great if everybody took a plate. There's a plastic wrap at the end. So take a couple of plates. Or you can wrap it right up. He's ready to get it.
Um, no.
Everyone technicals. So I think he, I'm just saying, everybody could get a plate. Come on, get a plate to take home. Everybody would be great. Fifteen desserts.
It's a good one.
Yeah, right. There's chocolate.
You know, I've already got it in the past.
There's plastic wrap.
I cannot, Marty.
Pulling off of Eric Manuel.
Next time. Anytime we get something over two eighty seven.
I love chocolate.
Right now, I'm like, oh, good. And you didn't get a walk the night. I knew that.
Two times? Yes.
It was three days. It was coming in the morning, morning, morning. And then. Probably looks coconut. Okay, yes, okay.
Then the fifth. Oh, yes.
There's certain things.
But like my. I guess I get to the point I think we've done it.
Yeah. Well, these.
That's a vacation.
Being a low income student. Yeah. We just didn't have it to stand. The thing I'm generally doing. One slide where we have.
So just a little visa. This is my crappy white cup.
There's.
Do you have strips in the bag? It can't blast someone up. It's not wood. I feel like I say that. I know. I know.
As for the parties.
Probably just actually. Yeah. On all things. Human service. Down there.
Hunter said the same thing. Hunter said the same thing. Let me go early like that.
What is this?
Yeah, Maddie, I feel like that's a big deal. You know, that was huge. Oh, together. Yeah, so Maddie worked.
This is just a weird connection here.
Well, it's not weird.
And my finance director and assistant finance director. What kind of pets are they?
Um, this is. Yes, and he's super tall. He's like, it's way front of his legs like this, but he's really. So he's laughing or yes, he his shoulders.
We can play.
Yeah.
Working this on the class at Joseph's.
Okay.
So he was from Colorado. She was from Karen's house to DC.
Oh, as to DC.
And then started in the house.
Oh, wow.
That is why. Came by my house, met my dog. I met her dog, pet it twice, but. He's a little wet. He's teeing it down.
From my mom's.
He just turns to. Some tea coffee. Yeah, it's my cousin's. Uh, she thought, so my dad was like, that's what I need. So I know. She like whisper. I don't know. Daddy like you.
Yeah. But it's important. Do we need more? Did we run out of this?
No, no. I tried to.
And I was very guilty about it.
Yeah. But I have.
Oh. Well, just because it's plain for them, they get by.
So I'm not like.
Yes. So you have a.
Yeah, absolutely. He also looks, he's he's pretty dangerous. Yeah, okay, are we ready?
Yeah.
Come on back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes, yes. Okay, we're reconvening. I think we left off with just defining outcomes. And I read, so he was your, I think you were the one who last spoke, right?
I have a question.
Ensuring on duplication of services.
Yeah.
Just trying to.
Has there been opportunity for you to weigh in with the commissioners? How is that going?
Um, you know, I think it's gone, it's gone well. I've been on a couple of calls with Commissioner Levy and just talked about, you know, the same opinion that we need to be really clear on how the funds would be spent. And that what the approaches that may work in in Boulder County or Erie or, you know, other municipalities may not necessarily work for Longmont. And so we need to not have a one size fit all approach, but really have it be specific to to the municipality because we have different service levels and different programs that have already been implemented. So it was another piece that I that I shared.
Did they have a suggestion or a way that they've already thought of to supply that kind of that transparency in how the funds are gonna be spent now or they want to just figure that out later?
That was a recommendation that that I I made. And I think that, you know, we still have the opportunity to to continue to ask for that in the ballot language itself.
Is isn't there a deadline for that ballot language to be finalized? So that's coming up pretty quickly.
I think it's coming up pretty quickly.
So, yeah. So you're still hopeful that you can get something?
I'm hopeful.
Language?
Hopeful, doesn't.
Yeah. Do you have suggested language that you want to have added?
Um, I don't specifically, but I think I think that we've learned a lot from other other taxes that have been passed, that, you know, what I would I would say is really back to that municipality specific plan. And so not a one size fit all approach, but really what works for each community. There's a way to to include that.
I think Christine is being.
In a right.
Very delicate.
Let's hear it, Aaron.
I think, you know, in reality, it's kind of what we went through on the affordable housing tax and attainable housing tax where, you know, you have supportive services and you had other issues. But then, you know, we were talking about, and it's good to have the affordable housing funding, but you also need supportive services dollars. But that ended up staying completely within the county system for the top bill.
But yeah, was used to backfill.
Some of the gaps. And so when you went through Xenia, one of the most important pieces to building permanent supportive housing is actually having supportive dollars. And I think good job being really.
And I would, I would say though, that Commissioner Levy did call that out in one of our first meetings to say, we cannot repeat, have a repeat of the affordable unattainable housing tax in the ways that that was that was ruled out.
And I had, I had made those comments there too because what it is doing, if you're not clear on how you're gonna allocate it, uh, it it turns into the Hunger Games amongst the municipalities. And and these issues and it it got pretty rough at times in terms of the the housing dollars. So I think that's what we're saying is you you need to be very clear on what you wanna do, what the outcomes you're looking for and how different municipalities can take, you know, their specific situations into account. Our problems are distinctly different than Boulder, although the magnitude of the problems look the same, and there are differences behind it. And we can pretty clearly say that almost everything. You can't look at Boulder and say that's what Longmont is. It may look like it, but what's behind it is completely different.
So are you, do you think you're gonna get what you need from them in assurances or language for you to be able to, as a council, support this or not support it? I'm just wondering where you're going with. Okay, so you all, where are you going with this? Because the the, you know, the citizens of Longmont are gonna wanna know what you think. Because you're you're the kind of the end user of these funds potentially.
Well, my concern is, is this all gonna end up being paying, oh, thank you, paying in for administrative costs and oversight where we're not actually using those dollars to produce any meaningful action? That is my big red light that I'm, like, I will not support this. Yeah, okay. And did you get a response?
Um, it was to Commissioner Levy and she she and I continue to say that in our in our group of our executive group. And so she does realize that that there were some some issues with that and.
And called it out.
Okay.
This is the most robust conversation we've had on this topic as of.
Really?
Oh, okay, of mental health or just.
Office tax.
Yeah, this was, this just kinda popped up.
This is just, yeah, no.
That's what I'm saying. I don't, like, we're just figuring out some of these things.
Yeah, yeah.
How we each feel about it right now.
Great. There's been no direction to bring any particular information. It was just something the mayor wanted for us to chat about, so.
So no.
So thank you for motivating us.
Oh, yeah. So this staff from the county come to give you a.
They've not presented. Are they planning to come to present to us?
I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay.
They have.
Since they do.
Yeah.
I mean, they want, they have to put it on the ballot first.
Okay.
Before they come and ask us first or ask you first and more.
No, we haven't had a substitution.
Okay.
No.
They're still to me, they're unknown.
There's a great deal of that.
I would think that they want your input before they vote it on the ballot. It's not a city's party.
And it's basically the larger city of Boulder County.
Not after the.
Not after the fact. So and the other piece, as I'm looking at the ballot language, and it might have been refined since this email came out, but it talked about mental health prevention and early intervention services, crisis response and intervention services that do not involve law enforcement. So then that brings me back to what our work with the core and our leads team. Okay, and then I think about being a person of lived experience and having, what happens when you call your mental health provider? And they're off hours. If this is a mental health emergency, call nine one one. When you call nine one one, who comes to the door? It's law enforcement. And so how, what are the impacts going to be by having this here? And does it then undermine the work that communities like ours are already doing with the core, with our core and leads team? And getting public safety, you know, trained for crisis intervention? So I just, you know, so so some of these things, and I've seen, I've had, we've had a core team come out with this. And it is a very different experience than it was when my daughter was going through her mental health crisis prior to the initiation of core and leads. This was back in twenty thirteen, twenty twelve. And police would come out. Those interactions are night and day and I and for the better. So I would really challenge, you know, so we're putting this out, but do they understand the nuances of our communities? And we have services that are working and we're looking to refine them and make them stronger. Would something like this just get in the way?
Well, I think that speaks back to the unique, the the nuances of each community. And so a response, you know, up until probably the last, I don't know, five years, six years, I live in Erie, there hasn't been as robust of a of a program there where Longmont has been doing this for, you know, since twenty sixteen. Since twenty sixteen, we're almost going on ten years. And so if you look at a community that has developed that over the ten years, where you have, you know, a community like Erie that the that Boulder County actually hires their responders to work with their East Department. There there's some real differences there. And so I think if it speaks to a community response for the for the unique municipality, then that offers up the the. um, then that offers up the, the, the opportunity to really do what's, what fits within the community.
Yes.
Well, it sounds like, uh, uh, potentially eliminating that part of the language will help just keep the options open.
Yeah.
And that needs to be done before they vote on.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is like now.
Yeah.
This week.
Yes.
Because, and again, you wanna keep those individual municipality options open. And that might shut a door.
Yes, yes, that that's what I'm worried as I, as I read some of the, the language and what could be implied.
Right.
If this is included. Um. Well, one of the things, uh, talking about that makes me think about every time we would go to the National League or Congressional, uh, conference or, you know, see Summit, City Summit, where, um, I always wanna look and see what funding we could get. I mean, this was.
Yeah.
Yeah, for.
Before.
Before. Um, but a lot of times we wouldn't qualify because we're all, most of the time are ahead of everyone else.
Yes, yes.
And so where do we sit with that? If for the funding for this, if we're already doing the work, you know what I'm saying? And we are already ahead and, yeah, we're not taking that language out because we already have a program that's working well.
Yeah.
Um, can we, I mean, how would that be distributed amongst municipalities? And that's the thing, if we've already started the work and doing quite well.
Mm-hmm.
No.
There, there's currently no, uh, splits in the, in the wording, there's no split for municipalities.
Right. And and.
Currently.
But that's my fear, like, they're not stating.
Yeah.
How much.
So, then they could decide, well, Erie's not doing enough, so here, you take all this pot of money.
That's my.
And then we have a large group of.
Yeah.
Residents that are paying into this fund and, and you know, and I hate to be that person of like, my, you know, kind of, kind of attitude, but if we're putting a large portion into this, into this tax, you know, we should be able to access it as well to enhance what we already have. Without restrictions. Pinalized.
Without restrictions, so like, a few years ago, when they started their co responder program, they taught us, I think you and I were in the conversation about if we wanted to partner and, and there were some pretty hard lines.
Mm-hmm.
Where we were just like, you know what, it's a Boulder and Longmont, basically said, you know what, we're ahead and we're not gonna do this, because there were some, I think, core operational disagreements.
Hmm.
Like, the core respond, co responders, uh, would go without police. And we were like, that is incredibly dangerous.
Yes.
To go without a police officer with you because we have seen.
Right.
You know, people in crisis.
Yes.
That if you don't have law enforcement there, that there is a high probability that he can go south in a hurry.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, Boulder and Longmont both said, you know what, wherever we are, we're not gonna do this. And so the restriction piece is real.
Mm-hmm.
Because why would we change a program that we know works really well?
Mm-hmm.
And frankly, we've learned around our home, we started with a different co responder program, the data said it wasn't working.
Mm-hmm.
We unfunded it and then shifted to what we have now.
Mm-hmm.
And so those are the nuances, are you gonna put restrictions, are you gonna do this?
The other thing that I would add is that as a city, we've really built that continuum of services where we have the, the, uh, core clinicians, which is our highest level of clinicians, um, down to clinician one positions that really look at more of the, um, uh, kind of basic counseling and resource dissemination. And so we have the ability, when a core clinician goes out to do the assessment, do they need a higher level of care? Or do I need to refer them back to, um, children with families, to senior services, to housing and community wellness, to get those, um, resources? And so, within our system, we have built that out, um, where other organizations may not have that and we shouldn't be penalized.
No, right, no.
Well, we're getting ready to make another leap, hopefully in the near future.
Yeah.
And so, yeah. You shouldn't.
Right.
Not be able to qualify for funding.
Well, how?
Yeah.
Should we have to, have to pay for others to catch up to us? Or is it better to, you know, further bolster what we're doing so that others can more easily follow?
Right. How, um, if we, we can potentially help just amplify that voice of you all if you can, like, this week?
I think they might be voting on it tomorrow, I just met with the county.
I think that's right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
We started to prepare.
No.
Yeah, we started to prepare some information and then they were, but they were voting on it that day in the KFW news of our language.
But are they voting on moving it forward or are they voting on the actual language?
I think they're just moving it.
So, there might be time to address the language.
And then to, to, yes, okay, okay.
Well, in that piece, we can help with, you know, amplifying the important points that you made about the language and making sure that Longmont. I don't think they're locked into the language because they still need to do polling and, yeah. Okay, okay, very good.
Are they gonna have time for all that before?
It seems very pushed.
It does. That was part of the pushback too, is like.
Yeah.
Yeah, why, why?
Well, today's economic climate, pushing something fast, it's not, well, caught out.
Disasterous. Yeah.
Plus, we're.
We'd be happy to share.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay, well, it is after eight.
Can I ask for one?
Yes.
I was gonna bring it up earlier, so one of the things that we typically see when we're in these tough financial times is the amount of unfin, unfunded mandates that we fill is pretty brutal. And cities are going through the same dilemma right now. And so we would just offer ourselves to both of you, as if you think something like that is, uh, potentially in legislation, we'll be happy to review it and go over that because it's, it's, it's a challenge, it's a challenge for us.
Yeah, most definitely, I mean, I think most recently, the county cut some, uh, childcare programs, so our childcare provider came into council asking for funding, you know, it's, it doesn't. We appreciate that offer and we're happy to, having been experiencing the waterfall. Funded mandates from the right and, and trying to grapple with counties and cities on how we take all of that on. Yeah. Appreciate that offer.
What's the exact timeline for the special session?
It starts August twenty first and it goes until we are.
Oh, there's no, like, finite.
Three days is the minimum, but we're not gonna do it that way. It takes three days to get any bill through, if it goes.
It only takes three days to make the law, if you can do it right. Yes. I have a feeling the House will be in for longer than, uh, or, or, uh, more extended, they, every member.
Well, we have more people that need to go down to a microphone and say something.
And every member can introduce in the hall, every member can introduce one bill, they just have almost double the number of members, so more bills to address.
So, strategic microphone access?
Yes.
Strategic microphone access.
Sure.
It tends to attract people that like a microphone.
I will definitely take a look at the bills, thanks for the.
Yes, look at the ones, uh, those are the ones you can see, we don't know about the other ones.
And it goes so fast.
We don't have that.
I experience a special session, it's, it just goes so fast.
Well, I'm done.
Yes, how much?
How many seconds?
I think it's my third.
Okay, well.
I'm gonna go. A motion to adjourn.
Okay, so, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So, move.
Okay, and seconded by councilmember Pocken, seconded by, um, both. Councilmember first and.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.